Hey, you gentlemen, ready to go? All right. So I'd like to call to order this June or July 16th, 2024, meeting of the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
So we got a good turnout, looks like, this evening. That's good to see. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission. And it called to order at 5:30 PM. As far as introductions, to my far left is Commissioner Chad McNutt. To my immediate left is Commissioner Ray Schulte. To my immediate right is Commissioner Robert Grant. My name is Hal Hutchinson. I'm the chair. Also like to introduce Jared Holbrook is the Deputy County Attorney. Shelby Trottier is the planning technician. Sean Gustafson, the ECS Engineers is a contracting planner, I guess. And Steve Granger, I saw him in the audience as well. He's also with ECS, the Natrona County's planning point person. Do we have any staff communication?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for a few points of clarification, we do have a couple of cases set for today that we've already heard before. The first being MS-24-01. That, Mr. Chair, was remanded back from the B.O.C.C. to be reheard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did provide each of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners with a brief summary of what the motion was and what the county commissioners were looking for as far as answers go for this particular hearing. It will be much like the last hearing where we go through all the points and hear public comment again. And hopefully, we can get some answers to these questions that the county commissioners want an answer. Then, second, on that particular case, there will be a new notice going out to neighbors and will be published. But the hearing for that case after this will be on the September 3rd County Commissioner Meeting at 5:30. I just wanted to give everybody the soonest heads up that we can on that. As for the second case, MS-24-07, that will be heard by the county commissioners at the August 20th meeting, which would be the second meeting after this meeting. And that case, Mr. Chair, was tabled at the last Planning and Zoning Meeting. So we will not be needing to rehear the entire case. Essentially, there can be a motion to remove it from the table and then continue on with discussions and hear from anyone else the Planning and Zoning Commission wishes to hear from.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a, I understand there was a miscommunication or a technical error, something on the coffee, MS-24-07. So basically, I guess we should, we should approach this tonight as if the first one almost never happened. Is that correct?
There wasn't a, an error on the notice on that particular one. There was a new notice that had been sent out. And my understanding is, is that the, the actual applicant had misread what the notice was and did not come to that last meeting. So there wasn't any issue with the notice that, that was given. So we don't need to treat it as a new hearing. We just need to remove it from the table and continue that hearing.
So I recall some concern with the applicant not being here. So that would, that would explain that situation.
Yes.
Okay, I understand now.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Everyone should be aware that the commission is an advisory board for the Natrona County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, and there will be two tonight, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearings are recorded and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After the commission holds a public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the commission here. First, we'll hear from those in favor of an application. They may come up and address the commission. Next, those opposed to the application may address the commission. And when the chair recognizes you, please come to the podium, right up here at the front. Clearly state your name and address before giving your comments. And for tonight, there will be a five-minute time limit on all comments to the commission. You should be aware that this is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the chair before addressing the commission. If a person's conduct is out of order, the chair may give the person a warning. If the person continues the conduct or if the conduct is extremely out of order, the person may be directed to leave immediately. As I mentioned, there are two items on the agenda tonight, MS-24-01 and MS-24-07. All right. Next on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from June 11th, 2024. Does everyone have a chance to take a look at those minutes? And chair would entertain a motion for consideration.
So move.
For approval?
For approval.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Okay, all of us in favor of the minutes being approved as submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Minutes are approved? Okay, on to our public hearings. The first public hearing for this evening is MS, is, the number of it is MS-24-01. And that is a request by John Miller for approval of a major subdivision. The Tatanka subdivision consists of 20 lots on a parcel of approximately 320 acres in the urban ag, that's UA, zoning district. Parcel is located, lot 2 and 3, the southwest of the northeast, the southeast of the northwest, and the east half of the southwest, the west half of the southeast, section 4 Township, 35 North, range 79 West. The property is currently accessed from the I-25 Frontage Road. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Sean Gustafson with ECS Engineers. As you're aware, you've heard this case before. I'm gonna go through and summarize mainly talking about the, the new things coming forth. Tatanka Major Subdivision, MS-2401, with the legal description boiling down to it being north of town and adjacent to part of the BB Brooks subdivision. Criteria for approval on this subdivision is still the same. Criteria is 1 through 8 and 9 have all been met by the Platts and submissions and so on. There has been some new things brought forward. One of those things I'll go into real quick, quickly is the FAA easement. Originally, that, the FAA easement that accesses one of their facilities to the, I guess that'd be to the north and east of, of the subdivision is, is a critical facility for them. There is a record, or there is an easement to this subdivision. And let me see if I can get to a, there, whoops, we'll go back one. It's represented by the, and I apologize, this, the pointer works, but it doesn't work on the screen, so I'll walk over. It's represented by this dotted line that runs across diagonally across the subdivision. That is an exclusive easement to the FAA. That was an unrecorded easement is why it wasn't found immediately. It was kind of dug up through some contacts at the airport and, and public comment that brought it out. But one thing I'd like to point out is that the FAA doesn't really care where their easement is. They need an easement to that site. And as long as that road remains open throughout the construction of this subdivision till such time as the roads within the subdivision are ready to be used. And then they, then they will write an easement over the top of that for the FAA again. Most likely, there will be a gate at the north and east corner of the subdivision on that. But at any rate, the, an easement is no less valid just because it's not recorded. But it has been found now and it has been addressed. And it's item number 10 on the notes of the plat that they've, they've addressed that with. The, oops, sorry, got a little loud there. As you know, the Commissioners, Lord County Commissioners remanded this back to Planning Commission due to some things that were brought up at the meeting. One of them being the FAA easement. There were some questions, I believe that's, Mr. Holbrook handed that out to you. You know, is there adequate power is, is one of those questions. The, with any subdivision, that's always a question. They, how the, how the process works is that Rocky Mountain Power is contacted. And they evaluate the subdivision, they evaluate what's going into that subdivision, and they make sure that there's enough power there. If there's not enough power there, then they modify their system to make that power. And this is all done through contracts and so on with the developer, whoever's developing these subdivision. It can be done as an entire subdivision at once or it can be done as, as pieces come in. There's, there's gonna be a trigger point. Let's just, and I don't know this, but let's just say that the, you know, after six lots, all of a sudden, there's not enough power. Then that's when it would trigger in that Rocky Mountain Power would upgrade their system. And that would be through an agreement with the developer. So that's pretty much a normal, normal situation. The opportunity to tap into regional water has been brought up. This area, to my understanding, has been recently added to the, the boundaries of the water district of the, being able to be served by, by this. However, that doesn't mean that the subdivision is ready for, or any of these subdivisions are ready for water. That takes, takes quite a bit of, of planning. It takes, first off, that line that runs from Casper to Midwest is a transmission line. And it's, that is its function, and you don't just tap into a transmission line. So what you would need to do is, you would need to build a distribution system within the subdivision. That distribution system would include, roughly, I guess I'd say, not, not in all cases, but a storage tank that's able to handle fire, where you would go from the transmission line into the storage tank and then distribute, distribute it around the subdivision. The, the cost of that, as you can imagine, is fairly high. Storage tanks are in a dollar and a half per gallon rate right now, approximately. So we're talking just for a tank up there in the neighborhood of a million and a half dollars plus the infrastructure of the subdivision. There is no requirement, to my knowledge, that they would have to tap in and build this distribution system. One of the main reasons for that is the DEQ Chapter 23 that was conducted. Chapter 23 investigates the adequacy of water and the soils in the area to handle the sanitary sewer. That Chapter 23 came back with positive results. The DEQ accepted it with no, no adverse commentary on it. Same with the septic systems. So in other words, yes, wells are okayed in this area. The State Engineers Office also gave pretty much the same response. So I think that at some, at some point in time, yes, it'd be very desirable, I think, to, to tie every subdivision in Natrona County into the regional water system. But it doesn't necessarily need to be done at this point in time. It's probably not financially feasible, I would think, at this time. Are the roads going to be constructed immediately? And will they be constructed to county standards? Yes, they will be constructed to county standards. That's part of the subdivision requirements in Natrona County. Will they be constructed immediately? I would say as a, they could be, but they don't necessarily have to be. Many subdivisions are phased. And they're, they're phased in a way that makes sense as far as access, as far as development of the subdivision and as, as far as, as financial resources go. Then the, the final one there is, can this be financially backed by the individual? Is he going to go halfway into this project and stop? Or is it going to get done? Criteria 8 and 9 in the subdivision regulations speak mainly to public safety and public utility, which would be water and sanitary sewer. There is no water or sanitary sewer to be proposed in this. So this is simply a division of land. And as it advances, the roads will advance. So that's, that's why it makes that, that criteria. And then the other part of that is, was the actual statement on the, Mr. Holbrook went back and listened to the, the meeting minutes. So there have been a few, trying to remember how many right offhand here, six, I believe? Six comments now received in, in writing. And of course, numerous comments in the, in the open hearings. They, they all pretty much speak to the same thing. And it's, it doesn't have anything to do with the division of the land. So one thing I want to emphasize with the subdivision, both subdivision, both this and the BB Brooks, is the fact that the roads are dedicated to the lot owners within the subdivision and not dedicated to the public. So therefore, the roads within this subdivision. Would be very late, bump a run, you know, that portion of the city bull are dedicated to whoever buys within that subdivision. The road that you see just adjacent to the subdivision on the east is dedicated to the lot owners in the BB Brooks subdivision. So they, unless further agreement is reached, they cannot be used by either or. So that would also go for the FAA access easement. That is only for the FAA. That is not for anybody else other than the landowner and the FAA. So. Explain power. I was, I was going to say we recommend, or, you know, as staff proposes, you know, to enter a motion to approve, deny, table, or recommend. We recommend, as staff, we recommend the subdivision meets all criteria contained within the subdivision standards. And I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Gustafson? Chad?
You, you lost me a little bit on the roads when you were just explaining who has access to that, that easternmost road.
Oh.
That, so that's, yeah, if you could just explain that again, I'd appreciate it.
This easternmost road here is not actually part of this subdivision.
Okay.
It's part of BB Brooks.
Okay.
It's dedicated to the lot owner of BB Brooks. If the top of something does not, if you can use that road, it's shown on there because.
Gotcha. And then, and then the road that has the easement on it, the FAA.
The FAA road?
That's also owned by the BB Brooks or that's, that's who the easement is, the agreement is with, between the? Sorry, I'm asking.
I'll get back to that, gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha. The, yes, that is, that road is an easement exclusively, exclusively to the FAA. It was written by BB Brooks when BB Brooks owned this land.
Okay.
That easement does carry on perpetually until changed, though.
Okay.
Follows the land, I guess you'd say.
Okay.
And the other line that you see running diagonal down through there is that pipeline that has been identified. It's, it's always been shown on there, but it's been identified on the subdivision line with its own easement.
Right?
Yeah, I don't know if this is the right time, but in the board packet, there was a question about who actually owned the land and who made application. And I was just wondering, was, was that looked at by staff? I know I talked to Shelby about it.
Yes, the, I believe, and, oh, but correct me if I'm wrong here, the original application was made by the, is it Wyoming Land Company?
That is correct. And the information that we have at this point is that ownership was transferred solely to Mr. Miller.
Solely, yes. And, and so now the, of course, the signature lines of the plat will change.
Thank you.
Same, same people, different entity.
Anything, Robert?
I don't think that turned up.
Okay. And I, I know the applicant and the engineer here this evening too, or surveyor here this evening to speak to it too.
Okay. So being somewhat aware of what the county commissioners remanded to us, one of the deals was the financial wherewithal of the applicant to move ahead with the project. Can you explain, what, what does an applicant have to provide to show that they have financial wherewithal to move ahead with the project? To answer what the commissioners were asking about?
That is a, that's a very good question. As far as what needs to be shown, Mr. Holbrook, can you? I honestly, the, what I've seen before, I've seen letters from the bank. I've seen kind of an inventory of, of properties owned. You know, something that is, is worth to get to. I've, I've never actually like seen someone's bank account or anything like that. In the, in this case, is, I'd like to emphasize that the regulations do only go to water and sewer, basically, public, public safety and public utility there.
So I actually went to the state statutes and did some digging on that myself. It does say, yes, water and sewer, but it specifically says streets and roadways as well. So I thought that was interesting to have your phasing suggestion. So can, can you just walk me through, what does it take to show that you have the adequate financial? I know from other jurisdictions, you have, for instance, in, in towns many times, you have to have the street paved before you can sell a lot. Or you can get a building permit. Do we, do we have those type controls here?
There has to be a roadway of county, up to county standards to that, access to that, to that lot before occupancy can be given. So, yes.
Before a building permit can be issued?
Not before a building permit can be issued, but before occupancy can be given, as I understand it.
Okay.
And I believe in the, in the statute that, and I'm, I can't say for sure, I'm not a lawyer. But that speaks to, again, publicly owned infrastructure such as city streets or actual county roads, not roads that are to subdivision or that are dedicated to the lot owners within the subdivision, private roads, if you will. The standard in the subdivision regulations is the same. The gravel top of 30 feet wide, you know, that's, that's the same. But it's, because it's not maintained by the county, I do not believe that that standard. Well, I would be surprised to see if that standard applies.
You'd be surprised to see the standard for a standard?
For a, no, the standard for a, the financial. You need to have the financial wherewithal to, to build the whole subdivision.
So just, I was interested, so I did some digging. It does say that the applicant, and Jared, maybe you've seen this, but talks about having a bond and escrow required. And you have to have an estimated cost for the streets and water and sewer and all that. So is that something that we would enter, is that something we would require?
Mr. Chair, it's something that we could require as far as, depending on what specific conditions are, are ordered upon approval. The board could make recommendations that, that all of the roads, in this instance, we only have three roads. I, I think when we're talking a larger subdivision, it could be a little more complicated. But could make those requirements that, before a final plat is signed, that a bond be provided to show that there is that backing to, to be able to construct all of the roads. And there could be a subdivision agreement that's entered into that has specific requirements as to what is required for paving or the condition of those particular roads or even the general construction, the timing of construction with those could all be part of a subdivision agreement if those conditions are what the board would be recommending.
So the reason I'm belaboring the point is, the commissioner sent this back to us. And in my 12 years sitting here, I don't even remember that happening before. So one of the things they asked specifically about was the financial wherewithal of the applicant to, to pull this off. So I guess, given that background, I for one would think that those type of regulations and information in the subdivision agreement or requirements in the subdivision agreement be pursued.
And the, the subdivision agreement would be something that would be entered into prior to the final plat being signed. So that would essentially happen after the B.O.C.C. meeting with any conditions that they were to require. And the applicant would, prior to having that final plat signed, they have to enter into that agreement. But I think that they are absolutely conditions that you could recommend if approval is recommended. And again, the applicant is here and can speak to some of these issues at this, at this time.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if it helps, most, as you've seen, I know you've seen in town, a lot of subdivisions are built in phases. And each one of those phases may have a subdivision agreement or you may see a subdivision agreement for the whole thing, acknowledging that there will be phases. So.
I don't believe we heard that in the initial application, that there might be a phased deal. So maybe we could hear from the applicant tonight.
Yes.
What, what he has in mind there. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Sean.
All right, thank you.
At this time, would the applicant like to come forward and share with us any information we haven't considered so far?
My name's John Miller. I live at 1270 Moccasen Trail. So let's start with the monetary. We had a meeting the other day. And I brought in documentation, okay? I own my house outright. We have a CMA on the house, $790,000. I own a lot in front outright. We have a CMA, which is a cost market analysis of $240,000. I own a lot on Ridgeview, which is another part of the county. I paid $90,000 in cash for it. I own a lot on Coulter, which is in town. We paid $70,000 for cash. I own a lot on Coulter, which is in town. We paid seventy for cash. But everything we have, we are more than set. I don't even, um, know how these people come up with. Part of my, what I was going to address is none of these people come up with valid things against the subdivision. It's all personal. It, it's, it's not, are they going to build the roads right? You know, when, when they all bought in BB Brooks, the, um, this was not part of BB Brooks. So, why do they think that they should be allowed to cut across my property costing me half a million dollars? You know, they just think, well, we can do it. Yeah, no. You know, it's, it's basically, it's complaints against myself, work, and multiple, multiple people have come up and said, you know, the commissioners have asked, well, did John work in your house? No. Well, how do you know John? Well, we don't know John. So, why are you up here complaining and, and running? Now, there are a few, you always get a few, and, you know, I'm going to wait, I want to reserve the right to come back and rebut, but we'll see who says what. But it just seems to me like, so Greg Gerard seems to be on a mission. Him and I don't get along. That's, that's fairly well known. Um, his father.
Just trying to leave people out of it.
Huh?
We have, we, let's, let's try to leave names out.
Well, when, okay, yeah, but when you write a four, five, six page and then.
You'll get a chance to rebut after we take that all into account. So, at this point, I'm just asking you, is there anything else we need to know about before we move into a public hearing and you're going to hear pros and you're going to hear cons? And then we will, yes, have you come up and give us, give a, you'll have the opportunity to rebut.
I'm just asking you, it meets all the requirements. Pass it, you know, um, and yeah, I'll come back and rebut anything and everything.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Bill Feringer with CEPI, uh, sixty eighty Enterprise Drive. And, um, we've done the surveying and the layout for the subdivision with Mr. Miller. And I was wanting to address several of the issues that did come up. And Mr. Gustafson touched on, I think, every one of these, but I was going to try and elaborate a little more. First, first item I was going to talk about is the roads, are the roads in this subdivision, which the three roads there are Windy Prairie Lane, Titonka Run, and Sitting Bull. Uh, there is stated in the dedication on the plat that the roads within this subdivision are private. Sitting Bull Road, Titonka Run, and Windy Prairie Lane are dedicated to the use of the owners and guests of this subdivision. Nitrone County will have no responsibility for maintenance of these roads, and they are not dedicated to the use of the public. Uh, the roads in this subdivision are not part of the road system for the BB Brooks area. And that is, uh, well-known, and so that's why, the reason for the, the private roads. Uh, we've got designs, we've, we've completed a design on the roads to meet county standards. And, uh, during the construction of them, they'll be staked and, and, uh, made sure that they're built to the standards of the county. Um, the FAA road that Mr. Gustafson talked about is an existing two-track road that cuts through the subdivision, and it does provide access to the FAA facility to the northeast. Uh, the FAA does have an easement to use this road. The owner and I have met with the FAA about this road and the potential of eliminating this access as the subdivision develops. We assured them that when the existing road is cut off, the FAA will continue to have access through Sitting Bull. And, um, the FAA director told us that at that time, um, a new agreement would be enacted with the current owner. And, um, and it should be noted that the FAA is the only organization with permission to use that road to cross this property. And then, um, when it's moved up to Sitting Bull, uh, the FAA will be the only outside organization authorized to use that road, a- aside from the owners and guests of the people that live in the subdivision. Um, construction phasing, uh, we've, uh, CEPI has done countless subdivisions within the county and, and especially the city. And it is not unusual for a developer to construct a subdivision in phases. It is, it takes a lot of money, as we've been talking about, to construct a subdivision like this. They'll do a phase, use that income to then, um, you know, help offset costs to the next phase.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do you have a phasing plan already prepared?
Kind of. Um, the, the developer plans to begin with constructing Windy Prairie Lane, the, the road to the south. So then those, you know, that, that's the cul-de-sac. And then, uh, once that road is developed, uh, those seven lots that abut that road would then be able to be developed and, and sold, constructed on and sold. Um, once he gets to a point with, with that phase, I don't know if I'm doing something with this or not, but anyhow, once he gets to a point with that phase, the construction will then move north along Titonka Run. And, and then those, those lots will then be, uh, on each side of Titonka Run would be developed. And then the last would be Sitting Bull would be, uh, constructed, and then those lots would then be available for purchase. So, it, it, again, it kind of depends on how the sales go and how the construction goes, but that's kind of the phasing that, that we've talked with the owner about.
That might be something that's in the subdivision agreement then, as I understand it. Correct, Mr. Holber?
It, it's something that could be in the, in the subdivision agreement. The, ultimately, uh, that would be, uh, the proposed plan at this time. If there is any, uh, conditions that, uh, you recommend or that the county commissioners, if this, uh, is passed, I actually requires, then those requirements would be in the subdivision agreement.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and, you know, this, this phasing plan right now, like I said, it's, it's tentative. It's kind of a, you know, a work in progress, depending on how sales go and, and construction goes. Yeah, you know, we could do more at one time or whatever. So, but yeah, that, generally, that's how the phasing is that we've discussed so far.
Okay.
Individual water wells and septic systems are, are planned for each lot in the subdivision. An in-depth study has been prepared to address the additional wells and septic systems anticipated with this subdivision. As required, that study has been submitted to the DEQ and, uh, and, you know, for review and approval, and they've approved it, uh, with no apparent adverse effects to the environment. Um, as Mr. Gustafson had brought up, there was also some discussion about why we can't connect to the, uh, uh, regional water system with the water line that runs to the east of here. Um, I, I spoke with the director, uh, Bruce Martin, with the, uh, the city, the, also the director for the Central Wyoming Water uh, system, regional water system. And he said that currently that line is a, as Sean said, is a transmission line, and you're not allowed to, to tap into that. It is strictly for the purpose of providing water to the Midwest Edgerton area. If an improvement in service district at some point in the future was to be created in this area and came to the regional water system with a request to connect to that, uh, the, uh, the regional board could then, um, address that and take that under advisement and either say yes or no. But as Sean said, it would take more than these twenty lots, uh, that we're trying to divide right now to afford to make that connection. But take that whole area out there, would pretty much have to agree to coming into the, to the regional system and participate in the costs.
We're most likely talking about decades instead of just a year or two.
Probably, yes. Yep. So, um, and then, uh, the last thing I was going to comment on was, was the power, and as Sean said, that, um, you know, Rocky Mountain Power, the owner has talked with Rocky Mountain Power. Rocky Mountain Power has sent him a contract. He's already signed a contract for them to provide power. I talked with the, uh, the engineer at Rocky Mountain Power, and he said that, uh, currently, um, everything they're seeing is that there is adequate power in the area. And if it comes to a point where there is some, some reason that it's not delivering, they will bring more power in, and they, they will make it, make it work. So, uh, so we've, we've addressed the, the comments and the, the concerns of the Board of County Commissioners with these. We've talked with, uh, we've, we've spoken and met with, uh, everybody that, uh, that we can think of to, uh, and they've, they've all agreed that we're on the right track. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Anything? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to move into the public hearing? Yes.
Jason Knope with Edge Engineering, forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road.
So, I have to first ask you.
Yes, sir.
Jason, are, are you here to speak in favor? Are you here to give us technical information?
Oh, this was an open comment?
No.
Oh, I gotta wait.
Yeah. All right. So, we're, um, next phase is to consider the public comment. I've got that here somewhere. Or not public comment, but the public hearing. All right. I now declare a public hearing open for the consideration of MS twenty-four dash zero one. And that is the request for John Miller for approval of a major subdivision, Titonka subdivision, as we've been discussing, consisting of twenty lots on three hundred and twenty acres north of Casper. So, um, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Would you please come forward, give us your name and address, please?
Jason Knope, Edge Engineering, forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road. I guess I could do technical to, um, our firm did the, uh, chapter twenty-three study for this acreage. Um, we studied all the lots within one mi- or all the wells within one mile of the three hundred acres, and then all the wells within two miles of that three hundred acres, including all reservoirs that were registered with State Engineers Office, and found adequate supply of water. The quality, quality is okay, as you know, if you've been out there. But we recommend treatment for any homeowner that lives out there, but, uh, the, the quantity is definitely there, and you're more than welcome to drill down to the second aquifer, get a little bit better quality if you wanted to. Septic study on this, just recommended standard. Um, there's fairly tight silts in this area, actually, once you get past the sand layer. So, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary for any septic for protecting aquifer in this area. When it comes to, uh, um, public utilities, those are very commonly required to be put into escrows and, and, and/or held, um, set aside monies. And when it comes to the public side, um, generally, those are regulated by, uh, construction permits and occupancy permits. Same as the city side, they, they definitely hold escrows, uh, for large subdivisions on all of the public utilities, including all the road sidewalks, water sewer, storm sewer, everything like that. Private side, they control with their permitting side, with the occupancy side of that, even private roads. Any other questions?
Questions from Mr. Knope? Thank you. Anyone, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? So, for the, for the record, Mr. Miller, you might want to come up like we did last time.
John Miller, twelve seventy Moccasen Trail. Like I said before, I think we've met all the criteria. We have gone through extensive, we've been working on this for a year to make sure everything is right, up to standard. And we just ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you please come forward?
Hello?
Chairman, Steve Taylor, twelve three seventy-five Tomahawk Road. I live just right next door to Mr. Miller. I'm in opposition to this for many reasons, but I hear a lot of back and forth here on this, and they've addressed some of the concerns that other people have brought up that ain't here tonight. But I've also heard John come up here and tell us that he's not going to stop us from using that road to the north once, if, if it does get the new approval from the, um, feds. So, if he sits up here and tells us one time, then turns around and comes, been here the next meeting because it got kicked back, and now it's not going to have access, there is a sign at that road on Sitting Bull at the highway that the last owner, Mr. Olson, with the land company, who's a part of BB Brooks, put that sign down, and they did their land acquisition at the time because they did a land swap. And we started using it at that point. That sign is still there, ten-foot by ten-foot sign. So now, like this gentleman said, they're going to put a gate out there. See how this is getting kind of wishy-washy? This ain't right. And if there's ever a fire, if they do shut the one road down and only let the others, this new Titonka Run subdivision use it, and that puts us all using one road, that means everyone who uses that aviation road to pass through BB Brooks up all the next six miles, there's two more accesses into BB Brooks way up there. All them people have used that road for most part because otherwise you gotta go clear past the office and around, and that's over an hour out through them roads. And in the winter time, you ain't never going to make it. It's bad out there because we don't plow roads. There's no money in the HOA for it. But he's said in here before, he's going to let us have access now this time. So, why don't we get some agreement on this and make it legal with your office and everything included? He's willing to say he's going to give us, have it put in writing, have it filed. So, this way, there ain't no more bickering, because this stuff should be in line. There shouldn't be no gray areas or waiting for something to be a major subdivision coming through, to have hiccups and things is going to become problems. Because you see how that could be a problem, though? If there's a fire and we shut us down to one road, that means we're going to be running away from it in the wrong direction, because it's going to follow us because most of our winds are southwest in this area.
To be honest with you, I don't track you. I, I, I see Sitting Bull, and I've been out there, and I've seen where you come off the.
The ten by ten sign.
Yeah.
Previous landowner, he did the land assessment, they moved that sign down from the, here, in BB Brooks, giving us access because he said no problem. Now, tonight I heard that they're going to say they're going to put a gate up.
Or not allow access. Then the last meeting when we.
The gate on the northeast corner of the, is what I was, what I heard from tonight.
And I didn't hear that. I heard of when they moved that road, they're going to put a gate on this, leave that, that HOA, the new Titonka Run, be their access and the feds only.
That's not what I heard.
That's what I heard.
No. No, I heard Sitting Bull was going to be the replacement for Sitting Bull that's currently there. And the new Sitting Bull would have to be in place before the old Sitting Bull was abandoned.
And he talked about a gate being put.
Gate on the northeast corner of the Titonka subdivision. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Come on, let's step out.
What, what I stated was that it could be done. I didn't say it had, it was going to be done or it necessarily needed to be done.
At the northeast corner of the subdivision.
Northeast corner, it could, it could be to separate the two private sets of roads. That was a, maybe that was a bad example, but.
The BB Brooks that right now are using it with a ten by ten sign, but it got moved five years ago.
Because a long time ago, that road used to be cabled off, and that cable's still down there at the highway. Because there used to only be so many people that could even get up that road. That was, we're talking twenty, thirty years ago, though. So.
Yeah, but it appears to me that's an issue between the FAA and BB Brooks people.
Well, right now, we have a sign that says we can use it, and it says no trespassing, no hunting unless, you know, it's private property otherwise. So, if they want to shut down that road for us to use it, that's fine, but this is going to cause a big issue in BB Brooks because Mr. Olson, who's, who sold this land to John, is still on our board as a developer in Arizona, from Arizona.
So, I guess I'm looking just at what we were presenting tonight, and that is Titonka subdivision. So, if the new Sitting Bull goes in and the old one goes away, I can't see where that would be anything having to do with, with the current Titonka subdivision.
I was, well, my issue is the roads, and even John came up here and said that he doesn't have to give us access. access, but the meeting before this, before you guys sent it to commissioners, he said he wasn't gonna stop it. And since it's recorded, we can all go back and look at this. And another thing is, right now BB Brooks is also trying to do a, a change to the covenants out there, moving forward, and it's still in the process of running through their board of elections. I, that's what I'll refer to it as. But if it gets approved and there's a date, and I don't know what date this is, they're not gonna allow splitting of parcels unless you purchase prior to that date. So with this here being as small as these lots are, fifteen acres, is that gonna look really very good in the community when you come into town and have a bunch of houses stuck together? Then all of a sudden, everything's opened up again? And we don't need to have any more eyesores in this community from bad decisions or bad, just bad planning in the long run, you know? And, okay, I mean, county and fire and all them, I'm sure they've weighed in on this. I'm sure you guys got the paperwork. I haven't seen it. But what's the response time out here? Are we gonna build another station out north of town to have more fire trucks so they got less than a twenty-some minute response? Because at twenty minutes, most houses are gonna be totally lost. Especially with the new building supplies with all the glues in them. They just go up. They're a tinderbox. But these road accesses need to be figured out before we move forward. So this way it don't get sent back to you guys again. It has to be in writing, documented, legal. So this way there's no if, ands, or buts. Because if not, it's just gonna be more problems. And you want commu- you, you subdivision are like a community. If you, if, I don't know if you agree to that, each of them should kinda get along and mirror each other so it doesn't look bad on each other. But that's my opinion. You got anything for me?
Questions for Mr. Taylor?
So just a quick clarification, that ten by ten sign you're talking about, that just says this is the BB Brooks
Yep.
road or property and, um, you shouldn't enter on this road.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, prior to him buying it from the land company from Mr. Olson, that's who was on the other paperwork, if I remember right, you guys changed it. That, they moved it when they did, they got that land swap.
Okay.
So, I mean, really can't kick us in the teeth, laugh down the road after it's already been done, just because someone's getting out of it and not wanting to own the land no more.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you come forward, please? Good evening.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. How are you? Uh,
Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Greg Gerard. I reside at four thousand Horse Ranch Creek Road. I'm here representing the Gerard Ranch. We actually, uh, the Gerard Ranch actually has the lease for the grazing for the entire BB Brooks. We own some lots that are close to this area. We don't have any that border it. Uh, there, there's a lot here. First of all, I had, I'd emailed some information, the S- close to Nunish. Were you guys able to get that? With what was submitted to the county commissioners and
It was a big, long letter I saw.
Yeah, uh,
Actually, there were two letters, I think, weren't there?
Yeah, there was a, an email attachment or an e- and, I'm sorry, an email and the actual copy of the letter that was sent to the commissioners.
You guys got that?
There's a lot to take in there. Uh, hopefully you had a chance to, to read all that. Uh, just as, as us watching this project, uh, to see how it evolves, on June fourth, during a work session that the county commissioners had, uh, they had actually reviewed this since you guys had sent it up to them. And, uh, a couple of the questions they had was, was the roads as well as the water. In that work session, they had asked legal about such provisions being implemented on this project. It had been implemented before on other projects. I think the ten, a project on Ten Mile was given as example. Uh, the legal, whoever it was, it was, it was hard to hear, had said that that, that was something that they could implement as a requirement on this. Uh, as far as the financial guarantee, that came later as people who this gentleman has done work for have had issues with. I believe now you have, there are more people coming to, uh, the building department and filing complaints. I think there, there are some other legal stuff going on. There's a, there's a lot of things that are happening. Uh, so we were actually kinda surprised that this came back to you guys this soon. Uh, honestly, this is pretty black and white. The commissioners asked for a financial guarantee. They requested that the roads be built, excuse me, be built all at once. And then with the, with regards to the water, tapping into that regional water was, was something that they had discussed during that work session quite a bit. Uh, I don't know the specifics, what it takes to plug into regional water. I don't know the taps, things like that. That's what they required. Tonight, we have, there's none of that here. As far as the roads, people from BB Brooks had come and spoke because they are using some of the, the BB Brooks Homeowners Association roads. They pay, each of those people have to pay three hundred dollars or whatever it is a year per lot to keep those roads maintained and those roads will be used. If it were to be gone in phases, uh, the financial guarantee thing, that, a lot of that was, is included in, in the motion that the county commissioners gave. As I say, this, this application hasn't changed a whole lot. I can speak to the water, uh, you know, with, with respect and all due respect to the gentleman that talks about the water and, and it being good water and it's, there's plenty there. We're there. I've been all summer. Our wells are struggling to keep water to our cattle right now. I'm having to haul water and not just little amounts of water. It, that country is sandy. It's, I can't ima- I think, I can't imagine that many lots having wells pulling water and that not affecting the rest of the people around them. Uh, that's just my personal opinion. Uh, and with regards to make sure that I've covered everything, uh, oh, and the, the monetary, I, Mr. Miller had said earlier that he owns his lot or the, the lot across from him and the, and the home that he lives on, uh, that I believe belongs to his wife, Jody Miller. I don't, I don't know if that makes a difference when he had married her, if that. So I don't know if Jody is part of this. I just see John Miller's name on this project. Uh, with that, I, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have. I cannot speak for anyone that's filing complaints. I know that they, they are. There's a lot of unhappy people out there and I think you're gonna start seeing that or maybe you already have. I don't, I don't know what's, what's happening there. With that all.
Questions for Mr. Gerard? I guess I have one.
Sure.
So you made, we talked about these, uh, letters that we had gotten from, and they're signed Gerard Ranch. And when I see something like that without anybody's name there, I think, well, that's anonymous.
Uh, well, Roy Gerard had signed that.
So who, who, who represents Gerard Ranch?
Uh, Roy Gerard, but he could not be here tonight. Roy Gerard is the, he is the, pardon?
Did he write both of these letters?
He approved the email that came through with that attached. It was just difficult for me to get him to see. He, we have a copy that's signed. If you need it, I can get that to your office.
That would help.
And I believe the commissioners even have the signed copy. But that was just sent as an attachment from the, the computer as he was at a, at a funeral, so.
So who is Roy, who is Roy Gerard?
Uh, that's my dad. He, he owns and operates Gerard Ranch, Gerard Livestock.
Okay. Okay.
I got a quick question. Um, so you, you did supply us with a lot of documentation.
Mm-hmm.
You talk about how you're concerned about the water if this subdivision goes in. What other ways would Gerard Ranch be impacted if this were approved?
Oh. I've got a long list. However, one, one issue that we have right now is, is since Wyoming's a fence-out state and if this is, we keep hearing that this isn't a part of BB Brooks or it wasn't a part of BB Brooks. As far as our lease goes, it, our cows are on it. They they ca- they're not in there right now, but they have the capability to use it. If that's, we use that as a trailway through there. If it's not fenced off, there's gates left. It, it's, we've had multiple issues with Mr. Miller that, that we were on record before, uh, where cattle have, gates have been left open, fences have not been finished. Uh, foundations started and not finished, projects left for whatever reason. And then you come the spring and you find calves that had laid down in a, in a hole and in the winter time got covered up with snow and died. So, uh, if that's personal, as he wants to reach out, I, I think that's actually, that's a, a monetary thing for us, honestly.
Can I follow up on that then? So your cattle run on that property, but because it's not a fence, it's not, it's fenced, it's not fenced currently. So your cattle run on that land?
Yes, sir.
And
They have the capability to, since it's not, uh, the pasture next to it that is fenced off, that, that's part of our BB Brooks lease, the, I mean, everything surrounding it besides what Forgy owns.
So that would be your responsibility if you didn't want them on that land?
I'm sorry?
That would be your responsi- if you didn't want them on that three hundred and twenty acres, you could fence it?
Uh, we could, I guess, but that's
I mean, that's probably not practical, but
Yeah, that, that would be for, for them to do, honestly, because those cows are gonna come in and they're gonna rub on people's houses. We actually have an agreement with BB Brooks right now that when someone buys their property, uh, and it's signed off in their closings, when they buy a property, if they don't fence their forty off, the gra- the grass that's there that is not fenced goes with the grazing lease. So, once they fence that off, yeah, that's, but when they don't fence it off, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
But your lease doesn't apply to this three hundred and twenty acres?
Uh, it's, it's all part of it as far as, as we knew, we, it's, it's included with, with, with what we pay for. As far as we know, that's, that's, it's like with the sign being at the road. My dad had actually owned that property years ago and had sold it to, to Brooks Properties or whoever at that time. Uh, as far as closing that road off, uh, we, he had tried that and, and we were told pretty quickly, you can't close that road off, so.
Okay.
And, and with the, the, uh, to include with the fencing, if it's, if it's not fenced off, the cows will, they'll tear an envelope. They, they'll rub on houses. They'll, they'll be in holes. They'll do stuff. Uh, to date, if you want to talk about his properties, the, the properties he has are not fenced off. So we still have cows that get into where this gentleman is right now. We've had some major issues with that where his dog's chasing him and, and, uh, I don't wanna get into that right now, but
Anything else for Mr. Gerard? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Would you please come forward? Hello?
My name is Jessica Taylor. I live at one, two, three, seven, five Tomahawk Road. Um, I do have a question for you guys. In terms of the letter that gets mailed out to surrounding homeowners, how far out, out does that go? Uh, we live adjacent to these properties. We've never gotten one letter um, for any of these meetings. I would also assume the same thing for my other neighbors. Um, so if the letters were better circulated, I would also think that we would have better representation for the opposition as well. But, um, I wasn't sure if anyone could answer that question of who, is it just like people that border his property?
That would be a question for Shelby and Jared. That would just be adjoining, uh, landowners that get it and it's, uh, it only required that we send those out at least seven days prior to this hearing.
So I've never, we've never received one.
Is your property adjoining or
Like, like bordering?
Butting up against it?
No.
Then that would be why you haven't received one.
Okay. I mean, that kinda puts us at a disservice here where there are tons of people, you know, that obviously use that road that he's talking about potentially, you know, closing down for our access. Um, you know, my biggest concern with that is for safety. Uh, like my husband mentioned, for, for wildfires, for blizzards, stuff like that, that is gonna greatly change our situation in the event of emergency. Um, could that even affect our insurance rates, uh, how long a response time it is for the fire department to get to our house? Um, it's, that road is not a shortcut, like he likes to call that, call it that. It's actually longer because BB Brooks roads are not fantastic, but that's besides the point. We, we take that way. We go the longer route just because it's um, a lot, in winter time, a lot of times it's the only access we have to our property. Uh, so there's two entrances there. Um, and because the wind and the drifting and stuff like that, if we are butted down to just that one road, there is gonna be lots and lots of issues for these, well, I think there's like ten houses or whatever, where no one's gonna be able to actually access our properties if that Sitting Bull road ultimately does get gated for our use. Um, during summertime, I, doesn't bother me. You know what I mean? I'm strictly speaking from a safety standpoint there. Um, you know, then obviously, uh, people have, you know, elderly hoga home for ambulances, uh, for our horses, other people's livestock. Not being able to access your home for, you know, overnight is not an option in the winter. Um, so that is a very, very big concern of mine. Um, in terms of, is there a possibility of increasing the outreach for these letters for people that do, and like my husband said, we've been using that road for, I don't know, five, yeah, upwards of ten years that we've been there. I don't know. Um, so taking that away from us all of a sudden is, you know, kind of an unforeseen, you know, circumstanced situation. Um, especially when it's, like when online it had got posted that he was gonna keep it open to us. He's trying to be friendly to us and allow us access and now suddenly that's being shut off because we're going up against him. So kind of using that as a, you know, leverage against us just to get back at us for the pushback we've been giving him.
I don't think that's what we heard tonight. We heard tonight that that was gonna be open at the time that the old road is being closed up to the corner of the property.
I also heard gate and that, that, that corner was to be gated for us and it was very specifically said, the only people that would be granted access were the, the FFA people and then Mr. Miller and then obviously whoever is in his subdivision. Which mean that, to me, that says no, that's a firm no.
What I've heard tonight is, um, to that northeast corner, you're gonna have access at all times. And what happens from there, going to the east is up to somebody else, not Mr. Miller.
And I, I would encourage, you know, him to get up and confirm this publicly, what will happen with that road. Um, because like I said, that wishy-washiness of it, you know, is not ideal. And in, I'd say he mentioned that he's met every single requirement for the subdivision. You know, just because you meet the bare minimum does not mean that it should be granted. Um, and that's, that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Chair, maybe Mr. Gepson, uh, can clarify this, but I, I, I believe the, uh, comments were that the roads here, including, uh, Sitting Bull, leading up to that northeast corner, would be for the use of the residents of the Tatonka subdivision. So that would, uh, exclude landowners from the BB Brooks subdivision from using that road.
Okay.
And is Sean, am I correct on, on that?
So BB Brooks, if the folks in BB Brooks wanted to do something about that, it'd be between BB Brooks and the FAA, correct?
It would be between BB Brooks and Mr. Miller. Uh, the FAA at this point has access through an easement. Uh, but whether there is any other easements that went with the land when the land was sold, I'm unaware of any, uh, any easements for, uh, for that road, uh, a- at this point. If that makes sense, Mr.
It does now. I Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you please come forward? Mr. Gerard, you already had your five minutes.
I have one question I needed on the record, though. Would it be possible to do that?
Sure, quickly, please.
My name is
My name is Greg Gerard, four thousand Horse Ranch Creek Road. Uh, for the record, did this project get brought before the Regional Water Board or the Salt Creek Water Board? We'd really like to know if that, if they were actually reached out to and talked to about this. Thank you.
Can I clarify that question? You had another question, too.
Sure.
So as, uh, Bill had reached out, I had also reached out to Bruce Martin as well, because-
So, let me just get this straight, so we don't get-
Sorry.
-mixed up.
Water, the water.
So he stood up, he's done his five minutes.
Correct.
Then you're standing up here extending his five minutes, and it sounds to me like you're not here to speak in opposition to-
Correct.
He's gonna get a chance to rebut, so maybe you and he should talk in the-
You wanted me to wait till then, then? I was gonna do the technical, just so you guys had clarification. Without wait.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Would you please come forward? One more time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? With that, we'd call a closure of the public hearing for the, um, Gerard subdivision. Uh, let's see. Mr. Miller, I believe we gave you, we indicated we were gonna give you a, what did I say? Oh, Tatanka subdivision. Mr. Miller, we promised you a opportunity to rebut what you've heard tonight, and would give you that opportunity to come up and do that.
Again, John Miller, twelve seventy Moxon Trail. So, a few things. Originally, this was Gerard property. So it's like, people want it both ways. They owned it, they sold it. Okay, I bought it, so now it's mine. But they still wanna have some kinda control over it. I don't know who put the sign up, but I was originally told, take the sign down, because I asked about it. And, um, they don't know who moved it. And what I mean by that is BB Brooks, Alan Olson. He says, I don't know who moved it, but it's out there. So here's, I guess here's my, my statement, is I bought this and so now I own it. You're like, if you bought it. Now these people wanna go across it. They still wanna drive across my land, okay? But yet they wanna come up here and say, this, that, and everything, you know, don't do this, don't do that. But, oh yeah, well, we still wanna drive across your property. You know, it's my property, it's not their property. I have to give the FAA, and I'm willing to give it, we've met with them, um, a new easement. And yeah, I've had several engineers tell me, you could gate that off. That's your property, it is not, you know, it, it's, it's not for BB Brooks. When BB Brooks built their roads, they came down and then they came south to, um, you know, they didn't own the property, that's why there's no lots there. If BB Brooks owned the, owned the property, um, there would have been lots developed on the south side. There's not, that's why I bought it. Um, additionally, um, yeah, Greg and I have had problems with fencing. Um, I still have a part of mine that's not fenced. And why? Because it goes up, it goes down eighty feet, goes back up, it's like, I did all the easy stuff. But when his cows come through, I really don't, but I did do my front one. Um, this will be fenced off, okay? We're, we're gonna do the exterior, the, the part near the highway is already fenced, and the north side's already fenced. So really, alls we have to do is the east and the south side. We've made a deal with Pin Tail Construction, who does a lot of fencing in this area, but we're not even gonna start it until we're approved. Um, it's like the same thing, Rocky Mountain Power said, go ahead and start bringing power in. It's all marked. We're just waiting. But none of these people have come to me and said, hey, can we talk about this? No, they don't, you know, they don't know me, but they don't know me. It's the same thing with like, I just received a copy of the thing Gerard did. It's like, what are you going around to everybody's house, knocking on the door, saying, hey, do you have any problems with, you know, with this guy? Yeah, I have a problem with a guy on Wormsby Road. We're in a lawsuit. I leaned the property, and I checked on the lien when I was, before you, this meeting. Um, we're gonna be going to court, um, with the bank and everybody else, you know, and the same thing. Yeah, I've had, uh, a couple. I've got a, uh, a complaint, um, with the county right now, from the same homeowner. And what does it all come down to? He owes me thirty-eight thousand dollars. What does the complaint say? Money, 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 you know, I don't have money, I don't have this, it, it's, but the one thing in a complaint, in the county, I said to the county, is there anything structurally unsound about this building? No. Did I circumvent any of the permits? No. Did I circumvent any of the inspections? No. Are they all passed and approved? Yes. So why are we here, having this meeting for an hour and forty-five minutes? It's about, oh, he got filled from someplace else, and it was a pay item, and he still charged me. But he got it for maybe nothing. But that means I'm a good businessman. That's all that means, but, you know.
Appreciate your rebuttal.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I would be willing to talk to him about still going through, but come talk to me. Don't, don't do it up here and say, this is what we want, and then come to a meeting and say, you know, deny it, deny it, deny it. Kinda doesn't work that way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Bill Ferenger with CEPI, sixty-eighty Enterprise. I was going to address a couple of the issues there again. Um, Mr. Gerard asked about the, uh, if we talked to the regional water. I think I stated that in my first comments, that I contacted the director and talk, talked about, uh, whether or not we could connect or not. And, you know, at this point in time, it's not allowed, and we went over the whole cost. And, uh, Sean even addressed that also. Um, the issue with the roads, um, yeah, I mean, I, I've surveyed all over out there in BB Brooks. Those roads are not taken care of, they're not maintained. And I understand what they're saying about the difficulty with access to these roads. I grew up out in the country, too. Not living in the city and living out in the country, winter driving is a concern. And that's something that, that unfortunately you have to take care of. Um, as far as coming across this property, you know, Mr. Miller bought it from BB Brooks, and so it's private property, it's not part of the BB Brooks ownership anymore. And so allowing access is an option, but currently it doesn't have to be. Um, and like I said, uh, living in the country is, you know, roads are always an issue. And so that's part of living outside of the city. There's good to bad. Um, and, and John had mentioned that he has already gotten a bid and a contractor ready to fence, put the fence up around the perimeter. And so that should be taken care of once everything is passed. Um, so I think that's all I need to, I just wanted to clarify the, the water. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Ferenger.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for? Thank you. All right. Planning zoning commission. Um, discussion.
Mr. Chair, uh, do you wanna make a motion, uh, prior to entering into discussion?
Uh, well, I was gonna ask, I was gonna, discussion first and then, well, I guess have discussion, and then along the way, if someone wants to make a, uh, uh, make a motion, then they can do it.
Perfect.
Okay. Jeff?
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, enter into discussion? Is that what?
I, I think your motion was that we approve or disapprove.
I was hoping we could have discussion before we, we could-
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
We'll have the discussion.
All right. Sorry. Um, I live out that way as well, and drifting is really difficult, uh, it can be difficult getting around in the, in the winter time. And so my concern, I don't like the fact that a sign has been sitting up there, um, I don't know how long, how many years since you, you bought that, but, um, I just, you know, you've got a sign that says this is, if you're in BB Brooks, you can access it, and I understand this is, this is your property now. Um, but it, it does, it does bother me that sign was not taken down. So these people have been accessing it, and in the winter time, you try to get to your property any way you can, because out there, it's, you know, it's obviously wide open. Um, and so you take all those roads, I've taken BB Brooks roads to get to my house because of fires or whatever. And so it is an issue, and, um, you know, it, it seems to me that, uh, you know, what you, you should consider, um, entering into some agreement with, with these folks. I don't know that we can compel you to do that, but I think it's only fair, um, those folks, that, that subdivision has been out there for, you know, quite some time now. Those folks probably bought that property, maybe, uh, seeing that they had access through that, that area, maybe, maybe not. But, um, I think it's something that should be considered. I also remember, um, in this, in the previous meeting, that, uh, that you did state that, uh, you would keep Sitting Bull open for the folks out there. Um, and my voting to approve that, to send that on to the, the, uh, to the county commissioners was contingent on that. I think that's important. Again, I don't know that we can compel you to do that, because it is your property, but, uh, it's something that should be considered. This isn't, you know, your normal area, uh, your normal subdivision. This is a, this is a pretty difficult area to live in in the winter time, as I'm sure everybody in this, this room knows. Um, so those are kind of my, you know, my comments and my concerns. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chair, my, I would kinda echo those same thoughts. Um, you're gonna have to build the road anyway, so the cost to build the road is not gonna change. There's gonna be some more upkeep, I get that, but I've driven on those roads, and I don't think there's a whole lot of upkeep going into them, so I don't know that that's gonna change a great deal. Um, it could impact the safety of that area, so it might be a reason to not approve the subdivision request if, if the access isn't provided. Um, I don't know if that would fall in line with the rules, but it certainly, it's, it's been brought up enough that we could, certainly ought to consider that. Um, other, my only other comment, listening to the staff report, all the criteria is met. Um, there's, different issues were brought up, but I don't think they pertain to approving or denying the request for subdivision. And I understand people have concerns, I get that, but I don't know that that falls under the rules and regs for, for planning and zoning. That's my comment.
Thank you. Robert?
It looks like everything the board of county commissioners wanted addressed has been addressed. I think, like everybody else here, the access is the biggest issue that everybody had. And I think if Mr. Miller was to grant an easement to the BB Brooks residents and complete that road prior to shutting the other one off, would be in his best interest. That's all.
Okay, um, Mr. Miller, do you have any thoughts on that? That is an easement being granted to the BB Books, folks across Sitting Bull, as I understand it. Is that correct? Hold, one more, one moment, please.
That's, that's my thoughts.
And then if somehow if, um, the BB Brooks folks can get some kind of understanding with the FAA folks on the use of that road, they, they can do it. But I guess the question that I'm hearing is, um, are you willing to grant an, an access easement across Sitting Bull from the frontage road to the northeast corner of, actually to the, across, all the way across the new Sitting Bull? I hear ya.
So I guess basically what you're saying is you'll deny it if I don't grant them access? Is what I'm hearing. But yet, I could technically fence off the whole thing, build one house, because it's a lot of record, and make it a big horse ranch, and they could, still couldn't go through. So if I grant them access, are they gonna come up here and say, approve it? Or are they gonna keep saying no? The old saying, one hand washes the other. If you want access, then I don't wanna see you, you know, I come from Boston, it's very, you know, yeah, one hand washes the other. It's like, you want access? Then stop trying to put it down. I'm only trying to improve, but... So you wanna, you, you want me to answer your question?
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes, great.
Um, so, Mr. Miller, I, I don't think that's what I heard or meant. Um, there's just been a question, would access, could access be granted? Could it be a little more-
Yeah, we, we could, we could work something out.
Formal than, you know, some-
But, but like I said, Ray, they don't come, they don't know me. They've spoken publicly and said, people have said, well, John work in your house? No. Well, how do you know John? Well, we don't know him. But yet you're up here going against something, you don't even know me, you know?
And I don't know how we respond to that, John, I don't know what-
No, I understand that.
So I'm just trying to ask a question. Would it be possible for you to consider formally granting them access? I'm not saying I would vote to approve or deny it either way, depending on what you do. I'm just asking that question. Would you be willing to do that? If you said no, I might still be voting to approve.
Ray, I was willing at the last meeting, and we talked about it, okay? And then we moved to the commissioners. And then it's like, like even his wife says, oh, to get our coalition together to, to try to stop this. A coalition? Come on, what's going on here? But you wanna put a coalition together to try to stop this? But like I said, on the other hand, you want me to allow you. I would allow it. Bill and I talked about it. It might be closed for a few months or so, they'd have to go around, because if you notice, that, that old road cuts across three lots. Um.
But you have to keep that open for the FAA, so-
Well, the FAA said they could come in, Winnie Prairie, go up to Tonka, and then cut across. But they haven't been up there in a year and a half, is what the, uh, guy from the FAA said. And he's like, John, I could go around on the BB Brooks roads, it doesn't really matter, you know? Um, but I'd be willing to entertain it, but they would act, actually have to come approach me and say, hey, what do we gotta do, you know? But like I said, I, I was entertaining it, and Bill said, yeah, leave it, leave it alone. Then we go to the commissioner meeting, and then you get more people, they coalish together, you know, to start, oh, does he have the finances? You know? You know, I have deeper pockets than people know. And I'm not trying to be up here to brag, you know what I'm saying? I've got a well-known family partner that's also in on this. And, you know, so now they're questioning, they're also questioning my financial. And like I said, we had a little meeting, and I showed Jared. You want to see this? This is some financial stuff. This is my line of credit, this is my mortgage, it's paid. My line of credit is paid. So it's, you know, I don't know. But to answer your question, if they came to me and said, hey, how do we work this out? I'd be willing to entertain it, yes.
So, Mr. Miller, I don't want to, this has come back to us once, and I don't want to look for it not to happen again, but that also opens up an issue that happens all the time with joint use of roads, is who's taking care of it? So if you've got BB Brooks guys using your new Sitting Bull.
Well, that's the other thing.
Yeah.
You know, I've got to build my roads way better than if you've been on BB Brooks, you know? We've already talked to a company about, you know, like, putting magnesium chloride on them. It's, the Brooks roads are just, we don't even have to say what they are. But, no, you're right. But nobody's going to, everybody's going to want to drive over there, but nobody's going to pay. So it's going to be my homeowners that are, we're taking care of it. I mean, that's a little bit of the discussion, instead of just saying, well, we want access, you know, and we want to continue access because somebody put a sign down there. That sign will be gone tomorrow, I can tell you that. It will be gone.
Mr. Miller, just point of clarification, how many people are driving across it in any given day? Is it, it doesn't, I've heard different things from folks in the room. Some people are saying they drive across it a lot, others say it's not their primary way to access.
You know what, I've never actually, I know, maybe 15. So that would be 30 times back and forth. You know, I don't actually go out there and count.
No, I'm just trying to understand if it is the primary way people access their houses or if it's kind of, one of those things, they only access it when it's bad, when the conditions are bad.
Well, it's, it's sort of like, yeah, they would have to go up Tomahawk, I think it's called Homestead, you know, they'd have to go, like I call it, around the block. And to be perfectly honest with you, I hated that, because I had to go all the way around the block to get to Moccasin, okay? So then, what did I do? I bought the lot in front of me, built the driveway, now I only go three quarters of mile. So, yeah, the roads can be tough, but, I mean, it's going to be my responsibility to keep the roads, or my homeowners, whatever. But like I said, I'd be willing to entertain it, but I don't want to start some kind of dialogue, and then we go in September to the commissioners, and then they all get up here and start saying, you know, whatever, deny, deny, deny.
I've heard you're willing to entertain the access and taking into account all the things that go along with that.
Right. But I am saying here, in public form, they need to approach me on it. I'm not going to reach out to them about it. But, you know, I'm not that unreasonable.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, any more discussion? Chair would entertain a motion concerning the application. You might want to be the first.
Considering all the relevant factors, including but not limited to those set forth in the 2013 subdivision regulation in Tonka County, I find that the major subdivision meets all the general standards required. On that basis, I move to approve the MS 24-1 with due pass recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners with all the staff findings and facts incorporated by reference. However, I would like to see access, some sort of an easement granted to the homeowners of BB Brooks to access Sitting Bull. And it seems to me like that should have been probably done before.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, would that be a specific condition that is part of your motion?
That I would like.
Approval with the condition that there is an easement for BB Brooks residents to utilize Sitting Bull Road?
That's correct.
I had a couple of things that I'd written down along the way, in addition. So we talked about phasing. Does that need to be part of the motion?
Mr. Chair, would, at this point, on the table, we have a motion with that one condition and a second. If you're wanting to add any other additions, then I would suggest making an amendment to the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and I would, I would move for an amendment requiring a phasing plan to be submitted with the subdivision agreement, as well as, as well as financial resources consistent with state statutes for building the subdivision.
I would second that amendment.
So we have a motion and amendment, a motion and a second on the amendment, and I understand that goes first?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? So, for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Same sign, any opposed? So the motion passes? Okay, discussion on the main motion? Any further discussion? I guess I would have to say that it's my plan to vote in favor of the motion. You know, it's complicated, complicated situation, and I hear the access, and we talked last time, we talked tonight about access in bad weather, but it's really tough for me to look beyond the fact that we have an applicant who has submitted an application according to the county's rules and regulations. He's met every one of those, he's gone through the state process, and first and foremost, he owns the land, and he's chosen to do this with the land that he owns. So with that, it's my intention to vote in favor of. Any further discussion? Okay, calling the question, all those in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So I hear four, four, and zero against. So thank you, folks, that have taken your time to come out here to talk about the Tatonka subdivision. Next on our agenda is consideration for MS 24-07, and that is a request by Byron and Amber Coffee for approval of a major subdivision. The Inberg Road subdivision consists of three lots on a parcel of approximately 55.54 acres in the urban agriculture zoning district, parcels located at Coffee Simple Subdivision Lot 1. The properties are currently accessed from Inberg Road. So may we have a staff report, please?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. MS 24-07, Inberg Road, and again, I'll summarize this one since you've heard it before. I believe that, you know, it was tabled, and the main, main reason was that one person for, or, excuse me, one person against, or one person spoke against, and there was no one there to represent their subdivision, kind of a technicality. But as far as the, again, the criteria for, the criteria for approval of the subdivision, all one through eight and nine, all criteria have been met. Again, what I'd like to bring up on this one is the fact that there is no roadway in there, the, there's no public, or no access, no roadways dedicated to subdivision members. This is brought forth, the, I'm losing the term for that, the, the long skinny part in between the two subdivision, that sounds technical as can be.
Flag. Flag.
Thank you, sir. The flag lot there is for access to the lower lot, or the southernmost lot, and the main reason for that is the shape of that lot as they subdivide this, so that other methodologies don't make as much sense. I guess that flag could be over on the side, but somehow there has to be that or an easement to that subdivision, or to that lot. The, again, the planning considerations, there were some things brought up before about the soil, from Soil Conservation District, Rotten Bridge was fine. Soil Conservation District indicated that there are some soils that we need to be, not necessarily careful with, but consider in this area, but that's not outside of the ordinary. The Tonka County Health Department did not require Chapter 23 on this, since there are permitted septic systems and wells in the area, or within the property. Fire District, again, no comment. Everything else went through just fine. As far as public comment, at this time, we have three written comments, one for, two written by the same individual, against, and I know you've got those in your package. Again, the staff would recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission, I guess, first on table, the subdivision, and then, you know, enter a motion to approve, deny, or table again, I guess, the subdivision is possible. Staff finds that everything is met, and we recommend approval. So, any questions with that?
Questions for Mr. Gasserson? Sean, last time, there was discussion about Casper Alcoa Irrigation District and splitting the lot, splitting this property into smaller pieces, and access, or having availability of Casper Alcoa water for irrigation here? Do you remember that discussion?
Yes, yes. And as, Bill could probably speak to that a little bit better, with a little bit more knowledge than I, but I do not believe that this particular lot has water rights through Casper Alcoa, but I'll let Bill answer that for sure.
Any questions for Sean? Any more? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, now that we're through the staff report, we would need a motion to remove this from the table for consideration.
Before the public hearing, after the public hearing?
I think right now would be appropriate for it.
I move that we remove this subject from the table.
We have a motion and a second to remove MS 24-07 from the table. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none? All right. At this chance, I guess, or at this time, I'd like to get the applicant to come up and fill us in on details that we may be needing. Good evening.
Hello, I am Amber Coffee, and this is?
Byron Coffee.
We're at 12360 Inberg Road. So we're here today to ask for your approval of splitting our acreage, our 55 acres into three lots. Do you have any questions for us?
Is there anything we need to know?
Nothing than what has already been presented. We did send in a letter stating anything that was any of the concerns from any of the prior letters. We don't have anything new at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Bill Farringer with Civil Engineering Professionals, 6080 Enterprise Drive. I was going to comment on the question that Mr. Hutchinson had about the irrigation, and according to the owners of the property, the Coffees, they said they have no irrigation rights at this point, so that shouldn't be an issue. There was also another item, I think, that was brought up, was about access to the parcels. We've submitted approach permits to the county already, or three approach permits, one for each parcel. So they've already been submitted and being reviewed. Any other questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Jared, this is, we go to a public hearing, just like.
I think that would be appropriate, since we do have people here, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So at this time, we'd like to call, open a public hearing for the consideration of MS 24-07, and that is the Inberg Road subdivision. So at this time, could we have those in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward and state your name and address for us, please?
Hello. Hello. I'm Jared Compton. I live at 12555 Inberg Road, which is that triangular shaped piece on the, towards the top left, and just basically here to say that I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
How's it going? Marshall Felstat, I live at 12300 Inberg, which is right across the road, and I don't have any opposition towards it, in favor of it.
Thank you, sir.
Hello again.
Hi, Amber Coffee.
Byron Coffee.
12360, and we are just saying that we would appreciate your consideration in approving this subdivision.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you please come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Lincoln. I live at 12265 Inberg Road. As I'm sure you are aware, I've sent two emails stating my position, and I do have some questions. I know I don't have legal standing. I know I don't have legal standing for a promise not kept. I understand that. However, in reading through the zoning and planning regulations, I've seen more than once the words ethical, moral, and general enjoyment that people are entitled to have to their land. And my family has not been told in any way, shape, or form the intent or scope of this subdivision, and we have grave concerns about three more families being moved in so close to our home. So I guess my question is, don't I have any moral or ethical standing in this matter?
You know, that's really not our business up here.
But the zoning regulations mention ethics and morals and our right to enjoy our land. What about our rights? Do we have any?
Point taken.
We don't have any rights? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know about that. I suspect you have many rights, but I suspect your neighbors have rights as well, so that's what we're trying to balance up here tonight.
Has it been mentioned by the petitioners the intent and scope and purpose of the subdivision, what's going to happen? Are three more families going to be packed in there, or what? Because no one has ever said boo to my family. They found their way to our door fast enough when they wanted to buy the place, but after that, zero communication. Not even when they rented out a bunch of pasture for the eclipse. Nobody said anything to us about it. And we had trespassing and damage to our fence and property because of that.
So I guess my answer to your question is, what are they going to do with the property? Clearly shows that three lots are here, and that would imply possibility of three separate owners.
Yes.
And what they do with their property has to meet the rules and regulations here in the Toronto County. And they could leave it fallow, they could build on it, they could do any number of things according to the rules and regulations.
Thank you for answering my question, sir. I appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Call a close to the public hearing for MS twenty-four dash zero seven. So, gentlemen, you've heard the testimony of the folks for and against, and the background from the property owner and representatives. Chair would entertain a motion to consider what we do with the application tonight.
Mr. Chair. Considering all relevant factors, including but not limited to those set forth in the twenty thirteen subdivision regulation of Toronto County, I find that the major subdivision meets the general standards required. On that basis, I move to approve MS two, four, seven, with a due pass recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, with all staff findings in fact incorporated by reference.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I got, just to help me understand, so the parcel of land that the Coffees are asking to subdivide was originally bought from the neighbors to the east. So it was subdivided prior to. And the original landowner had the right to do that, and they subdivided. Now the new owner wants to subdivide it even further, and they have the right to do that. I mean, they're, so they're just, it's just a continuation of what happened apparently years ago. Am I understanding that correctly?
Do you guys know the background there?
Mr. Chair, I don't know the procedural history of what happened with this land prior to.
Okay. I don't know. Mr. Farringer?
I'll try and, I guess, answer that. I think it's, it's not difficult, and the Coffees could correct me if I'm, if I'm stating it wrong, but that they purchased this property eight to ten years ago, and then CEPI prepared a simple subdivision and split it into two parcels at that time. Approximately around that time, into a lot one and a lot two, and now they're coming back at this time, and they're again splitting the lot, one of those lots, into three parcels. Am I stating that correctly? Okay, yeah. So, so, yeah, they purchased it, they split it into two parcels, and they're coming back now and splitting one of those parcels into these three. And it meets all the, all the size requirements and everything with the county. That answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
So I would just want to, a comment I would make is, the question was asked if the neighbors to the east have rights, and as you said, all landowners should have rights within the boundaries of the property they own, and if they're following the rules that are presented in front of us, then I think we are obligated to allow them to do as they choose, as long as they follow those rules as they're written. That's why I will vote in favor of the motion.
Okay. So it occurs to me that I did not offer the Coffees a chance to come up here for a rebuttal. If, if you wish to, you're welcome to come up, and now that we've had the public hearing completed. No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I, I, because Mr. Compton, I believe I saw in his letter wanted to purchase one of those pieces that would actually get his property where he lives now up to the zoning regulations, because he has less than ten acres.
Okay. All right, so my, my input on this, and this is basically directed at you, Ms. Lincoln, I, I hear you, and, and I feel your pain, you wish things could be like they were, and I don't know how long ago that was that that was sold off. Was that the eight or ten years that we?
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen, so nine years ago, and, you know, I don't know if the same people are involved, or if there've been deaths and what have you, but just absolutely, you know, it's tough to control anything like that, and, you know, best intentions back nine years ago, or even yesterday, can sometimes get upended. But from everything we're told here tonight, the applicant has gone through all the hoops that the county requires, and it's just unfortunate if there was a misunderstanding, or if there's an understanding that was broken as part of the process here, but it's my intention, because they own the property, and they can, you know, they can do what they, what they wish according to the rules and regulations, they've shown us that again, they jumped through those hoops, so it's my intention to vote for it. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Time for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? We have unanimous approval of the motion. All right. Next, we have public comment. So this is a time when citizens may bring forth items of interest or concern that are not on the agenda. Please note that no formal action will be taken on these items during the, during this time, due to the open meeting law provision. However, they may be scheduled on a future posted agenda if action is required, so the podium's open for any that would like to come up and address the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Greg Gerard. Address four thousand Horse Ranch Creek Road. First of all, for public comment, we appreciate you. A lot of the decisions you guys have to make are difficult ones. You hear a lot of stories, both sides. You've got to put everything together, and not everybody's going to walk away happy. With that, Chairman, you had asked about, you know, who Roy Gerard is. Something I felt I needed to save this for public comment is, my daughter's going to be fifth, hopefully, fifth generation rancher. My great-granddad, Mickey Burke, came here from Ireland. He helped establish a lot of the community, including St. Anthony's Catholic Church. It's neat, we have an old copy of a deed from when him and, I believe, the Sullivans had traded some property down by First Interstate Bank where the old St. Anthony's was, to get it moved up to there. It was, they've done a lot of things in the community. My dad had put this ranch together through a lot of hardships. So for us to come forward with these type of issues is not lighthearted. He's a man of his word. He's, he's somebody that pretty black and white. Mr. Miller had mentioned the, and sorry to use names, but it was mentioned earlier that it was a coalition to get him. We operate that entire ranch, so when these people move in from back east or California, or even Casper move out there, we know them, we get to meet them, they're now our neighbors. We own some of the lots out there. So as these people come to Dad, he felt it's our responsibility to maybe bring them together and say something, to bring that to your attention, because obviously in the beginning, no one knew anything about it. A lot of those folks had thought that Mr. Miller was bankrupt, or didn't have any money, so why, why try to take him to court if there's no, you know, we can't get blood out of a turnip? Again, I just, I, my point being is, is this, this isn't, we don't, I think the last time we came before you was on the wind turbines where were being proposed, and that was a long drawn out deal. And they're, they're putting them in up there whether we like it or not. I do appreciate you guys voting against them, even though it went to the commission to be approved. We just want to reiterate that, and Dad would really like you to know that, unfortunately, he can't be here this evening, but, but his, his word is good. He, he wouldn't be here unless he felt the need to. He's done a lot of good things in the community and given a lot to this community, and he's worked hard to put things together, so when he sees someone come in that moves from out of state, and he sees these issues, that's, that's where a lot of this came from. So with the letter that you received, it may have come off as a witch hunt, or whatever. It's basically, we're trying to, here's, here's where you folks need to go. Some of those people had said, hey, we need, well, the county's liable now, because when Mr. Miller's license was suspended before, we sat and listened to the entire minutes of that, and they didn't take what he had done lightly. There wasn't a way to put him on probation, so they had said, Commissioner Henry had said, you know, we can't put you on probation, but you're on probation. Make this right. And, and for him to leave, and these people have never been contacted, the issues are still there. With that, I just, I just wanted to, if anything, thank you guys for your time this evening, and, and know that you have a thankless job, and we appreciate you.
Thank you for, thank you for coming up. Anything else on public comment? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion we adjourn?
Second the motion?
Motion and a second to adjourn at seven thirty-five PM. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Thank you all.